Hi, welcome. I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order. We are actually reconvening. Our board did meet at 4:30 to discuss the litigation strategy with our attorney. So this is, we are reconvening. So thank you, and thank you for coming. Welcome, and we're glad you're here. So we're going to start with superintendent's reports.
Thank you. Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to welcome students and staff from Metro High School. Metro has been focusing on strategically developing manufacturing, STEAM, and entrepreneurial opportunities for students. Students are participating in this experience by linking 21st century skilled lessons with local business partnerships. They are engaged in the process of engineering, manufacturing, and entrepreneurship using a variety of new tools and skills. A group of Metro students along with Principal Carlos Garcia and staff members are joining us to tell us more tonight. Dr. Garcia?
Dr. Grant.
I'm sorry, Grant. What am I saying? Carlos.
Thank you, Dr. Benson.
I give up.
We're very glad to be here this evening. Come on up, guys. We have several wonderful students from our entrepreneurship and woodworking programs, and they're going to talk a lot, a little bit about what they're doing, how they're using some of their STEM learning, engineering practices in the classroom, how that's being connected to the community. Introduce to you Devin Hussein, Austin Vaughn, Austin Mann, Emmett Townsend, Keegan Borden, and then our three teachers we have today are Mr. Tonelli, Shannon Ellis, and Matt Suckel.
My name's Austin Mann, and yes, I'm primarily talking about the technological side of Metro Made. As far as, when I came to Metro three years ago, we only had a CNC machine, a very small CNC machine, and a very low-grade computers that weren't meant to run any 21st century equipment. And since I've been there in the past three years, we've now gotten a much larger CNC machine. We definitely, we've gotten a CO2 laser, it's a 50-watt laser. We've gotten a MakerBot 3D printer. And in the next, you know, here soon, within the next year or so, we'll be getting another CNC machine yet, along with a, it's a computer-guided embroidery machine, to expand our label as Metro Made, and just making our presence known throughout the community.
I'll be mainly talking about where we've been and what we kind of do with our candy bar system, or what we make with them and everything like that, and also, oh yeah, and also our state parks field trip, where we went all over on the east side of the states and everything. We went to Yellowstone and Custer State Park and everything like that. But our candy bars is we make them ourselves, and it goes through a big process. We've had to engineer different little things like our vacuum sealer, and, hmm, what else? We've also, we also have had to make different recipes for our chocolate to actually, these are actually some of them that we have to use for our vacuum sealer. What we do is we take our CNC machine, and those actually will cut out wooden blocks that say things on them. These ones say Metro. And then what we will do is we will take this piece of plastic, and we'll heat it up, and then we'll place all those wooden blocks over it, and then we'll vacuum seal it down, and it actually makes these. And that's how we make our candy bars. And then we pour our chocolate all of ourselves, and it goes through different classes. There's a couple of different classes, like one class does the plugs, which is the wood, and that's our woods class. The next one does, like, all the molding and stuff like that, and then one pours the chocolate and wraps them in.
When I came to Metro, I never thought that I'd enjoy coming to school. When I came to, when I came into Metro, at first I went to my classes and I got my work done, but I wasn't having a very good time. I wasn't having fun. My advisor saw how bored I was during my classes and decided I need some kind of break during my classes, so he signed me up for robotics. When I signed up for robotics, I almost instantly loved the class. The class helped me come out of my shell and have a reason to come to school. My role on the robotics team during the four terms I've been here has been brainstorming ideas, building the robots, and driving them when they're completed. Robots, robotics have taken my classmates and I all across Iowa, and even out of the states for robotics competitions. Robotics has given my classmates and I a very good opportunity to really use our heads, problem-solve, and be rewarded for hard work. Thank you.
My name's Keegan. Last term, my seventh and eighth-hour class was with Matt and Shannon. In that class, we built a number of projects. One of my favorite was the soda box. We came up with a lot of ideas, like the bottle opener. We built it into the side of it, and there's supposed to be Velcro pieces right here that strap up to a bike. What we used is we used a laser machine to laser out this, and CNC machine to cut these, this pieces out. We assembled them by using assembly lines, and we had a bunch of, we had a bunch of stations that we had. It was a really great opportunity to engineer a soda box like this, and...
Hello, my name's Emmett. I came to Metro about two years ago, and I really like it. It's compared to Jefferson, and at Jefferson, I didn't really have much choice on what I wanted to do, so, and there's too much people. And so I came to Metro, and I like it because smaller classes and just fun students and teachers, activities, robotics. And I'm a programmer for robotics, so...
Thank you. Thanks, guys, for this opportunity. And I think you'll notice that we have a group of guys that don't usually have that opportunity to get up in front of a crowd and speak. So, big thank you to them for even coming and doing this, so... Yes. Chuck, Matt, and I are involved in a couple of projects, but over the years, we've been working with the University of Iowa on this idea about STEAM entrepreneurship. And the model that we're using at Metro is just an effort to bring all of the skills that we have together across the entire curriculum. It's not one class, but it's an effort in all of our classes to really instill the ideas about opportunity recognition, seeking opportunity, and doing something with it. And we're always excited when we can do real-world projects, where we have the kids engaged with the community, building real things. And so, thank you for all the tools and the equipment that we have, that we can use. And we always appreciate the opportunity to share that. We've inundated the state of Iowa with our story, and here soon, we're going to be going to the National At-Risk Conference to share the same idea about how you combine chocolate, robots, and STEM education. So that should be pretty fantastic, too. So thank you again.
Wow. Why don't you guys stay there for just a few minutes? Because we might have some questions. But I can tell you, from my standpoint, you just made us happy that we're on the school board, and all the hours that we put on here. So that is just outstanding. I love your candy. I've had many chocolate bars. You guys do a wonderful job. Comments or questions from the rest of the board?
Well, just, I didn't really get to see the thing on the floor. Could someone talk about that just a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, you want to hold it up there? Are you guys familiar with FTC Robotics very much, or have you been to a competition? Chuck, our event at the library is going to be January what?
Yes, January 7th, sorry. January 7th, our, our school will be hosting the robotics event at Cedar Rapids Library.
So January 7th, your school will be hosting?
Yeah, January 7th. Metro is hosting the FTC Robotics Competition. There's a number of competitions happening, but nationally FTC is one of the most fantastic opportunities our kids have to be involved in this idea about engineering and prototyping. And the other thing about these guys that I love, I've never seen a team after a competition just totally tear the robot down and build another one. And they tend to do that almost every time, is we just keep re-engineering our parts. The thing that I love about these robots that we've built, we have two teams at Metro, is we're probably one of the only teams in the state that we're using our universal laser, our 3D printer, and our CNC machine to actually machine the parts. Most teams in FTC are buying parts off the shelf, and these guys keep engineering gears and components for the motors and for the systems that are all engineered and designed by the students and then manufactured. So it's pretty fantastic when we can go to competition, and we've got unique parts, and the other teams recognize that, and come and ask these guys about that all the time.
Wow.
Yep.
Other comments or questions? Thank you so much for taking time out of your day to come and share your story with us. We're very proud of all of you. And Dr. Grant, welcome to our district. I know you're having a good start to your year if you're working with students and faculty members like those in our room. So thank you.
Yep, thanks, guys.
That's a great job. And please pardon my slip, Dr. Grant, but you're in great company. A personal friend of mine and colleague, Carlos Garcia, was past superintendent of schools in Las Vegas. So you can aspire to being the leader of one of the largest districts in the country, because I've given you that name now, so please excuse me. Next, I'm very pleased to share a recap of projects that were completed over the summer using funds from the physical plant and equipment PEPAL levy. As our supporters know, this is a maintenance and upkeep of the district. We have 425 acres of ground and over 2.7 million square feet of buildings to maintain, and the PEPAL is the primary source of that revenue. And if it pleases the board, from time to time, over the next few months, I'm going to be highlighting various projects as they come down. But I thought this evening it'd be good for our public to hear a little bit about PEPAL projects completed this year. They would include site concrete asphalt repairs at Erskine, Grant, Grant Wood, Pope, Van Buren, and Wilson. This is all just really flashy stuff, but it's what keeps us going. Exterior door replacement at Kingston Stadium. Gym floor refurbishing at Hiawatha, Hoover, and Wright. Exterior mason repairs at Franklin, Wilson, Roosevelt, and McKinley. Tennis court repairs at Harding, Roosevelt, and Taft. And roof replacements at Grant, Hiawatha, Roosevelt, and Hoover. We will be moving into an 11-year master plan, thanks to the community's support of the PEPAL election, and there'll be many more projects hit the ground next summer. And we want to thank everybody for supporting the PEPAL. Just before Thanksgiving break, we announced our most recent round of innovative learning grants. These grants provide technology-related resources that support creative learning environments, including the most recent awards of 17 proposals that have been awarded in the first two years of the program. Funding for the technology innovative projects is a silo funding source, and that's our sales tax infrastructure dollars, and we certainly appreciate that. And we have more specificity on those awards under the news tab on our website. I want to remind the community of our State of the District program this Friday, December 12th. Everyone is invited to join us at 7:30. The event is here at the Education Leadership and Support Center. We will be highlighting district initiative and programs, enjoying some student entertainment, and we will be welcoming back Dr. Brad Buck, Director of the Department of Education, as our special guest speaker. And finally, on behalf of the administrators, faculty, and staff, I want to take this opportunity to wish everybody a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Board reports. Yes, John?
Well, we do have, every year, an annual Urban Education Network meeting in Des Moines along with our Iowa School Boards Association conference. And this year, unfortunately, Dr. Benson, you couldn't make it, but you served as chairperson of the UEN of Iowa Committee from 2013 and 14, and we had the honor of accepting a plaque with your name on it in recognition of your service. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, John. Others? Gary?
As John just mentioned, I also attended the UEN and the IASB conference and was also the, sat through the delegate assembly. I handed out to board members the UEN legislative platform, and also a sheet with the IASB legislative priorities. Among those are the Iowa Card, transportation funding, preschool, a new resolution with the support of the AEAs, and also a new resolution dealing with children's mental health systems, and also supplemental state aid, which was formerly, we call it the Lawable Growth. A couple of things. One of the UEN's legislative priorities is to support the one penny sales tax, but also to move towards removing the 2028 sunset of that, of that tax. And at the delegate assembly, it was amended from the floor to include in their platform support in removing, working towards removing that from the legislation. So I know it would, it would help us with our bonding issues, being able to put it out a little bit farther. We have January, or, excuse me, December 20th, we'll have the local, meeting with local legislators here at this building. All right.
Any other board reports? No? In your consent agenda, you will see that we are going to be electing, re-electing Keith Westercamp as District Director Six for the Iowa Association of School Boards. Keith, thank you for your service. We very much appreciate it. We also will be approving the Oversight Committee membership, and I just wanted to remind everyone, they're going to be looking at physical plant and equipment levy oversight as well as local option sales dollars, too. So they're also going to be meeting more frequently. So I appreciate those people's service on those committees. Okay, next is Communications, Delegations, and Petitions. I do have one person who would like to address the board, it's Sven Leff. Sven, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and thank you for coming.
Of course, my pleasure. Sven Leff, I live at 521, 529 Deer Run Drive in Cedar Rapids Northeast. I am the Parks Recreation Director for the City of Cedar Rapids. On your consent agenda today is a lease agreement that we're working between the city and the school district for the recreation center over at Harrison. I simply came to let you know I'm here in case there are questions, but I do also want to share with you, we are very excited, and I am pleased with the progress we're making, the relationships we're building with the staff here at the school district. Really excited about the future of this project for the students, for the families, and for the surrounding community. And since I got the microphone just for a sec, I do want to reinforce the fact that safety is even the city staff's top priority, safety of the students, and the teachers and the families while we're sharing those grounds during the school year. So, great progress is being made, and like I said, simply, I hope you'll support this agenda, and I item on your agenda, and I'm available if you do happen to have questions.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate your comments.
Just want to call out Amy and Steve Graham for their work in getting us to this point. It was good work. Thank you, Steve. And Sven, thank you.
Next is our consent agenda. Anyone like to pull anything for separate consideration? Otherwise, I would, I would entertain a motion.
Move. Second.
Due to the personnel report? Director Witt.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
President Meisterlein.
Aye.
Next, I'll turn this over to Steve Graham for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Caffrey.
Caffrey. With me this evening is Kevin Smith. He is a partner with McGladyry out of Kansas City. He's made the trip all the way to Cedar Rapids to give you the latest on our fiscal 14 Caffrey version. So Kevin, take it away.
Good evening, Dr. Benson, members of the board. Thanks for having me here this evening. I've got a brief presentation, and then I'm available to answer any questions that you have about the information in front of you, or anything about, about the audit process. Your annual external audit is a very important part of the fiscal responsibility of the board, and it is required by state law. The purpose of the audit is really twofold, but one, to review the financial statements and give an opinion on whether those statements are, have been reported in accordance with all of the generally accepted accounting principles. And also, we look at federal compliance with certain grant programs of, of the school district. And so this presentation will just go through the results of the audit. I do want to mention that we meet throughout the year, and most recently, just last month, with the Audit Committee. You've got a group of dedicated individuals, made up of a few board members, and then members of the Cedar Rapids community that make up the Audit Committee. And we meet with them several times throughout the year to discuss fiscal and audit issues. So we have gone through these results with them in detail. There's a few items that you'll see in, in your material. One is this report to the Board of Directors. This slide here just summarizes what you see within, within that report, and it's just things that are required to be communicated to you at the end of the audit process. If there were any sort of significant difficulties that we had in performing the audit, these would all be communicated here. I'm pleased to report that there were none. We received full cooperation from, from everybody that we worked with at the district in, in performing our audit. The, the financial statements or the Caffrey, that one's hard to miss, the 100-page, the page document there. Our, the opinion that we give on those financials is on page one and two, and the opinion we give is an unmodified opinion, or in other words, a clean opinion. So that is the highest level of an opinion that we can give on the financial statements. The term unmodified is a little misleading, but that does mean that it was a clean opinion. And then there's a few slides here of some of the financial results from this year's, that are pulled right from this year's Caffrey. I do want to point out that there's some great information in the Caffrey. At the very beginning section, pages three through 16, is Management's Discussion and Analysis. And that's a great place to go to if you want to see some of the comments that management gave about the fiscal performance this past year, and compares that information to the last year. And in the very back of the Caffrey, starting on page 59, 59 through 86, has this, what's referred to as the statistical section, and that's a 10-year history of certain financial data and also some non-financial data that's back there. So those are great, great places to go to if you do want to see a summary of the financial results. Question?
Are we allowed to ask questions along the way, man?
Yes, absolutely.
The, the federal sources, that one up three and a half million on your graph there. Is that due, or maybe Dr. Benson can say, is that due to the settlement with FEMA or something like that?
Yeah, a good portion of that is the, the settlement of the FEMA fund. So that, that fund was able to be closed out this year, and a lot of that revenue that wasn't able to be recognized in prior years was recognized this year.
Thank you.
Yep. So this, this just shows the, the sources of funds. So all of the revenue from all of the governmental funds of the district went up about 6% or about $13.5 million. You know, as you know, that the, the district receives, receives a majority of its funding from the state sources and then also local tax dollars. You'll see a big swing there between local taxes and the state sources. A good piece of that is about $14 million of lost funds, which is the local option sales tax. That, the flow of that money changed this past year. So in 2014, those funds are reported as state sources, and in prior years, those were reported under the local tax item. So, so it's not as significant of a change as it might appear by looking at that graph. And then all of the expenditures for all of the governmental funds went down about $5.9 million or two and a half percent. The majority of expenditures of the district are instruction, primarily salaries. There were about 87 less full-time employees this year compared to 2013, and there was, the decreases in the expenditures were in accordance with the district's budgeted expenditures. And also, the decrease that you see there in the capital outlay does correspond somewhat with those FEMA dollars, so that the 2013 projects were being, the FEMA funds were, were being spent, there weren't those expenditures that occurred in 2014. And then this slide shows the enterprise funds of the district. There's two enterprise funds, the nutrition fund, and then the daycare fund. No significant changes here with respects to operating revenue and operating expenditures of those two funds. As you can see, the, the change in net position is very low. They run in a very slim margin, which they're, they're supposed to for, for an enterprise funds of, of school districts. And then for the compliance reporting, that portion of the Caffrey is in the very back section, starting on page 87. And so that's where you can go to see a list of the federal grant expenditures from 2014, and also the results of the, of our compliance reports. Government auditing standards, we issue an opinion that relates to the internal controls over the financial statements. And this is where we would include any sort of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over financial reporting, and you will not see any of those reported in that section. The other section is the single audit, or the, our audit of over federal grant programs. And this year, McGladyry looked at three programs of the district. We looked at the Title II, Title I, and the Special Education Grants. Those three grants make up about 46% of the total federal expenditures of the district, and all of those did receive unmodified or clean opinions, and there were no compliance findings reported for those programs. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions or comments from the board? Alan?
So red flags on page, you said 87, is, is that where you'd find any red flags? Is there anything there? I mean, I'm reading through it, but...
Yeah, you know, a great place to go is page, that's where the compliance section starts, but on page 94...
94, okay.
This is really a good place to go for a snapshot of the results of the audit, and we, we indicate here the type of opinion that we issued, which is unmodified, so, so there's obviously no red flags there. And then you've got a no in all of the items there as far as material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and other findings that are required to be reported. And so by, by looking at that, you'll see that there aren't, aren't any of those red flags there.
Thank you.
You've completely corrected our segregation of duties.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. We appreciate you coming.
You're welcome.
Are you back tonight?
No.
Okay, good.
I've got another board meeting tomorrow night, so...
You go.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to, I'm turning this over to Steve to talk about our budget assumptions for 1516.
I just want to say publicly also, we have Sherri Luskey sitting here, our manager of accounting. The amount of time and effort that she has put in with the auditors in this Caffrey report is phenomenal, and it would not happen without the dedication of Sherri Luskey. So I just want you to know that.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you.
Okay, budget assumptions, and we promised to make this quick, and I hope if you've got questions, you can stop me along the path, or wait till after we're, we're done with the presentation, and we'll answer any questions you may have. So, we've got 10 assumptions for you tonight, which is pretty much what we've done in the last recent several years. So, assumption number one is it will maintain a steady tax rate. When we're preparing our budget, we have a PEPAL tax increase scheduled for fiscal 16 because we have doubled the value of the PEPAL from 67 cents to $1.34. But we will provide for, our goal is to provide for a stable levy rate, and assume that additional 67 cents, and use existing reserves in our school tax funds in order to provide for that stability in the short term, and keep that levy rate very, very stable in fiscal stability in the short term and keep that levy rate very, very stable in fiscal 16. So that's our goal. Budget assumption number two is the district will continue to see a moderate growth in property tax base. And you'll see we've got four classes of property listed from, on the left-hand side, you look on the right-hand side, and you'll see commercial industrial property scheduled to go down by five and a quarter percent. And that's based upon the legislative action on the base of commercial industrial property. Residential will go up by, thank you, Justin, I see the arrow there. That's Justin's hand working, not mine. The residential at two and a half percent going up because of the rollback. Ag property at 3% going up also because of rollback and utilities not changing at all. These all have factors to bear in what we will see in property tax growth in fiscal 16. Assumption number three is it will continue providing $4 million per year until we reach $40 million of property tax relief from the silo resources that we promised voters back in February of 2007. Budget assumption number four is the decline in student enrollments will reduce revenue growth in fiscal 16. We don't yet know what the, and Gary alluded to this earlier, allowable growth, I call it allowable growth, the state supplemental aid growth, we don't know what that's going to be. Hopefully, it'll be higher than lower at the end of the day. But because we have a certified enrollment shrinkage of 21 students, and more importantly, we have an open enrollment loss of 85 students this year, that will have an impact, a negative impact, on whatever state number we get when we know what the state number is going to be. Budget assumption number five is that we will make, we will need to make adjustments in our budget. That is a given. And I'm going to move quickly over to the unspent balance forecast here. And you can see from 13, from fiscal 13 to 14, if you look at the gold bar, you'll see the unspent balance decline from $10.6 to $4.8 million. You can see now from fiscal 14 to 15 that we've almost flattened that out completely. We're in a much better place this year than we were a year ago, but we were operating on a 2.1% margin now. And so we have to be very, very sensitive to all the factors that go into putting a budget together. So allowable growth, supplemental growth of our per pupil amount will be a real key indicator on what we will be doing in fiscal 16. Budget assumption number six is that we will continually review our staff allocations and make the administrative prioritization of staffing needs based upon our available resources. And you can see in the last five years, our class sizes, you can see from elementary kindergarten at the top, going down to high school, you'll see those class sizes go up as you age through the system. From fiscal 11 through fiscal 15, the class sizes remain unchanged. Budget assumption number seven, we'll make every effort to arrive at fair and equitable agreements. 82% of our general fund monies are spent in wages and benefits. I don't think I need to say any more there. It's a crucial component of our budget strategy. Budget assumption number eight is we'll continue reusing the cash reserve levy in fiscal 16. We may be dialing that down in order to find ourselves with that level property tax rate while we're consuming that additional 67 cents for PEPAL authority, but we will still be levying cash reserve levy to continue rebuilding our general fund reserves to a better level than what they currently are. Budget assumption number nine is that we will continue relying on categorical resources. You heard this from Kevin Smith in his presentation. 44% of our general fund staffing rely on categorical programs, and it continues to go up over time. We continually rely more on categoricals, and they must be budgeted and balanced within each of the categorical targets. Finally, we have eight district funds total. I've pretty much been talking about the general fund, but we have seven other funds besides the general fund, and five of those are supported with local taxes. So it's a big pie of $273 million. There's a lot going on there, but this is just a bit of a highlight on some of the more important items to mention. So I'm happy to answer questions that you have.
John?
As we talk about class size trends and we see the averages, we know we've had discussions about class sizes. Are we looking at the possibility of having a range within some of these averages, that this would be the maximum that we would go up, and understanding what the cost would be associated with that as we do our budget planning for this year?
I'm going to quickly defer over to those who have more expertise in this area, because I'm not the one. I can give you my budget side of things here, but that might be better answered by somebody else.
We've asked for min's and maximums, minimums and maximums and costs associated with each one of those, and I think our staff are working on those numbers now.
That's exactly right.
And should report that back to the board.
We're in the process of gathering that information for you, for minimums and maximums.
Great, thanks. That's all I need to know. Appreciate it.
Other questions? Comments? We'd be very happy if we could keep the levy rate the same as it is this year. That's really an important goal for us, so we appreciate the work towards that effort.
Absolutely.
I did hear on public radio today that they're talking about trying to get us our allowable growth number within the first 30 days as required by law. So I think as we talk to our local legislators, that's key as we make budget assumptions.
Absolutely.
Gary?
Along that line, the IASB set 6% in supplemental funding as the goal that they would like to see legislation acted upon. I heard several times during the discussion in delegate assembly, though, that we need to be cautious of, there is some talk that the teacher leadership funds would be added into and counted as our supplemental aid. I can't get over a allowable growth term, but, and so I think we need to be aware of that, and again, push our legislators that that is money that was geared strictly towards teacher leadership, and it doesn't help us with the day-to-day operation, so.
Right, John?
I think too, when we were at that UEN meeting, Margaret and Larry Siegel made it very clear that the state of Iowa is slipping in our per pupil allocation for public education. And they had some wonderful charts and graphs, and I think, wasn't it last year or the year before, we had them come in and give that presentation, and anything we can do to help our legislators and the public who talk with the legislators understand, state of Iowa and funding is slipping, and that directly affects us in Cedar Rapids in these ways. As a board member, I'd appreciate that as I go out and talk with people in the community and in the schools.
Really good comments, thank you. Any others? Okay, thank you, Steve. Trace Pickering and Lori are going to talk about our new district website.
Lori, I won't even attempt your last name at this meeting.
Bruce. Well, we are very excited to announce that we will unveil the newly redesigned school and district websites later this week. The new look involves substantial feedback from students, faculty, and staff, and has resulted in really eye-catching and easy-to-use sites. During an extensive redesign process, we work to ensure students and their families, as well as staff, can easily find what they need. Similarly, we kept the information needs of our community in mind, too. We have added quick links and navigations that aid access to commonly needed resources, such as calendars, school locations, phone numbers, staff contact information. And webmasters now have the ability to easily add current news and events, videos, and photo galleries as they add ways to highlight their schools. We want to thank the members of the community, the district staff, and the students who provided input throughout this project. And it's been a very large undertaking, but we are seeing the great results, if you see the sneak previews on the screen here. But I also want to give special recognition to the building webmasters. They have done an amazing job of getting ready for the launch, at the same time keeping the existing websites up to date and current. Our community relations staff, Marcia, Justin, and Mark have also provided valuable input and resources throughout this project. And finally, I'd like to recognize Randy Waeger, he's here in the room. He is our district webmaster, and his expertise and leadership in this project has been phenomenal. Links to each of the new sites will be sent out to you tonight, and we hope you will take some time to look through all the sites and check them out on your mobile devices, too. All sites will be available on the mobile devices. And if you have any questions or comments, please let us know.
Great, long time coming, thank you. I like the consistency I already see in the pages. I think that was one of the things that we wanted to fix, so.
The district logo appears on the front page of all of our school sites, so there's some consistency. And I want to commend Lori and her staff for the work that they've done. It's been a long project, but I think our end results are going to be very nice.
Great, and I think you're going to show us, or one of the pages, the district page on Friday morning?
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay. Great. Carla? Talk about our transition plan from trimester to semesters.
Good evening. Even though we are only halfway through the current school year, we have spent a significant amount of time planning for 1516. You have in front of you a copy of proposed graduation requirements, and there are really no changes to the graduation requirements. The changes you do see are conversions. So for example, 15 credit hours for a year-long class currently will change to two credit hours for a year-long class. So that's one of the, basically the only change there with graduation requirements. You also have a transition plan and a copy of our program of studies. So yeah, I know, I'm excited about it, too. And so with the program of studies, I just want to give you a little bit of update. We have spent a lot of time, a lot of time developing that. We've involved teachers at every level. Teachers have worked to update course descriptions. We've updated course titles to make them a little bit easier. We've taken out some courses. We've added courses in. And this document will be, I don't want to say ever-changing, but continually updated. So we have some courses right now that are in limbo with the NCAA. We're waiting for approval. When those are approved, then we'll make that change in the program of studies. We have a couple of courses that are coming through. We want to try to do some innovative courses for next year, and when we get those finalized, those will be added to the program of studies as well. So it won't have major, major changes, but we'll just continually keep that updated, and we'll reevaluate that on a yearly basis. Questions?
Questions or comments? Alan?
Great job. I looked at the document, and I know it was a big deal.
We had a lot of people working on it.
The thing that'll be tricky with this one here is the communication piece, because as we know, most people are so busy, they're not paying attention to details. So what's the snapshot here of how we get the communication out to people so they're not playing the surprise game all the time to us?
What will happen is, we'll get this in as final form as possible, and it will go on our new website, and it will go on all of our high school websites as well. So it'll be the same document on all four high schools, as well as the district site. And those links, it'll just, so when they go to the academic program of studies, wherever they're at, if a change is made into the, in the program of studies, what we'll do is then we'll update it on that website as well. So that will always house the most current copy or the most current program.
Will Power School help with this process?
Um, no. I don't, I don't think it will help with our program of studies. What we're also simultaneously working on with this, this is, this will be for 1516. Power School will run basically a dual platform. I don't know, that's probably not the right technical term, but it'll run a trimester version as well as a semester version. And then we've created our design transcripts, so our students who are currently freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, when they enter into the semester system next year, they'll see trimesters on their transcript, and then they'll see semesters. Our freshmen will, incoming freshmen will only see the semester piece. So we have, are currently, as you speak, loading courses, literally, into Power School for 1516. And tomorrow, the assistant principals at each of the high schools will be coming in to start to look at creating that master schedule for 1516, because that process begins in early January.
Thank you.
Actually, Alan, I think the high school principals, some are here. Ralph, Jacque, thank you. Have already done yeoman's work, along with their counselors, their building leadership teams for the various departments, and communicating and preparing. So, you know, I'd like to call them up for public recognition for their good work. This transition has been actively working for over a year to get to this point, and we want to thank you for your work.
And you're certainly invited to come up and comment if you like. So talking about communications, so we've, I think Alan's right, there are going to be some pockets of parents and families that are unaware of this change. And so I'm glad that you're going to pay attention to that.
Yeah.
And equally important, I'm hoping that your staff, all of our staffs at the high school, all teachers are aware. I don't know how it's impacted their program of study, but I hope that they're satisfied with the content of their own study programs.
We have had, the program of studies has gone through countless revisions and review. Started with our content area teachers, having them look at, so if you taught the class, you were involved in that discussion. We've taken it through all the curriculum facilitators, we've taken it through counselors, we've taken it through the associate principals, several rounds with the principals, taken that feedback back, made adjustments then. We've met individually with groups of teachers at their building. We've tried to communicate a lot, pulled in all of the counselors, kind of gone through all of it with them, and then we'll do that again once it's finalized, creating documents for them to use in terms of helping them with that transition as they help students and families with that transition.
Okay, and I hope the high schools are, you're using your PTAs and PTOs as a communications vehicle as well, and everything else that you have at your fingertips.
We all do this in slightly different ways, but just to give the example that I'm most familiar with, you know, we meet with each class as a class for about a class period starting in January, first the freshmen, then the sophomores and the juniors. We give them the materials, the instructors present, you know, all the options and so forth. The very same day that we do that, we have an evening meeting we invite the parents to. So those are two opportunities for students and parents to learn really a great deal about the process. With incoming freshmen, we do that also. Our meeting happens to be February 3, where we meet with parents and students in the evening. So there will be lots of opportunities, well-publicized for students and parents to learn all they want to know about it. Actually, we wish parents would want to know more than they do want to know, and even more involved, so we will try and accomplish that. The other thing, other comment I wanted to make, I happened to be talking in the hall today with a group of six students involved in the Kirkwood Regional Center who are waiting for their ride to go out. And if you needed a reminder about a positive of the transition, that would have done it for you. I mean, there, it's just going to be so much smoother for those students on the semester program there to fit in with our, with their high school courses. So just was, clarified it even more for me, how valuable the transition is going to be.
Great, thank you for your comments, Dr. Plagman. John?
Oh, no, go ahead, Carla.
Sorry, I was just going to say one more thing. I do have a meeting scheduled, middle school counselors as well, as well as special services and all the associate directors there. So trying to take in the middle school principals and pretty much anybody else who will listen to me.
You know, on the college/university side and any other institutions that receive our students after they graduate from the district, it's really critical that we make sure they understand that we've made this big change. And I know the high schools are very good about putting out class profiles and all those things, but... those things, but to really emphasize that well in advance, and that you do have these new courses and new titles, and so that they can understand how that comes in for college credit or meeting requirements. So I think that, that's another piece of the communication puzzle.
Yeah, it's a good point. If I could, just say a couple of things. One, the program of study, you know, from my perspective, I view it as, as what I would call a living document. We're always, I hope, going to be modifying, changing, having courses come on, courses go off, because that's how you learn and grow in this process. And in that regard, the first year, this is a document with a lot of input. Nobody gets a hundred percent of their input a hundred percent their way, but I hope that everybody sees that we did listen, we did have opportunities, and in the end, the document reflects good educational practice.
That's what we like to hear. So, thank you. Yeah. Dan?
Just wondering about elementary, middle school, and what the conversations are like at, I mean, at that level?
The transition really will not impact them at all. They're, I mean, they're already operating their courses, all year-long courses. They should not really notice any change.
Alan, did you have a comment?
Again, I think this is fabulous. I am, I'm thinking about, again, communication-wise, with the newspaper folks, you know, this is like a public service example of the biggest magnitude for a city of our size. You would hope that the press would pick something up on this, or we could prepare something even, that would talk about this as all the positives, and it may, it may catch on where they, becomes a, it goes viral, you know, as far as what goes out there on the, on the web. So, I just, I have a little bit of angst in my stomach that it's not going to get out and be a positive story. It'll be kind of a reactionary story, where it's like, what are they doing now? So, I just want to caution us that if there's something we can do to, to get ahead of the story, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any, yes, John?
Just, just one more thing, as we talk about things changing all the time. I, I heard the governor had a press conference today, and will be pushing for a requirement in coding or computer science, potentially in place of math, of a math requirement. So, again, like you've said, this is-
We actually have a coding class in the works that did not make this final document, because all the forms were not in. It'll go in tomorrow morning.
Great. And I, I know that Trace, in some of your programs, that's a huge thing, and some of our students, and we see robotics and all these other programs, that's certainly part of it as well, so.
We have actually two courses that will be added tomorrow, that we just were waiting for the final copies of stuff.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you, all of you, for, for making this transition happen. It's not easy, we know that, it was monumental, but it, it's all about students, and it's all about giving them as many opportunities as we can, and aligning those calendars with Kirkwood and others, just, it, it gives us, gives our students the best of both worlds. So, and the three of you, and Jason, Klein, are going to make this a really smooth transmission, transition, right? Okay. Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight, too. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Dave and Laurel about policy manual review and revisions.
Thank you. Members of cabinet who are on the policy review committee, and myself, were here this evening to address any questions that you would have about the regulations and procedure that's been proposed.
Questions or comments?
I had one just about the graduation requirements, and I'm not looking at it, so I have to remember which one it is. But, just because there's the transit, and maybe I missed this in Carla's presentation, but because there's this transition period of, like, how many credits they need to graduate, does that need to be spelled out differently in the policy manual, or is that addressed? That's, that's the only thing I was confused about.
The graduation requirements in the policy will begin with the class of 2019, which will be our incoming freshman. The document that you saw, so our current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will graduate under their current requirements. So, for example, on that transition guide document, that's basically the state requirements of four years of language arts, three years of math, three years of science, three years of social studies, and so forth. So they'll graduate under that, and then for the minimum number of credits, they basically have to meet that four, three, three, through three, to meet the graduation requirements. And if they do that, so it's going to take a lot of work on our counselor's part, as those kids for the next three years go through that system, to kind of evaluate on almost a student-by-student basis where they stand with that. And that, the, this document will kind of be guidelines for them. So, I, if I, so for my current juniors, I'm going to need approximately two hundred and thirty-five minimum credits.
Right. I understand that. I guess my question was about the regulation, and it does, I see that now, it says beginning with the class of 2019.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if, if there needs to be another paragraph in there that says, for the classes of sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, it's a transition period, and the credits are a blend of the old and new, or however, just so that, just so that the policy and regulation manual just isn't silent on those kids, that that's still, I guess that's my point, is that that something is still addressed for those kids that are in transition in, and realizing we don't vote on regulations, but it just seems like there's a little bit of a gap that we need to address in the policy.
I think for clarity purposes, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, that it needs to be that chart.
No, probably not, just a paragraph.
It might be just kind of a vague statement that, that they need the previous, and maybe the previous is in for reference. I'm not sure, but something to look at.
Good suggestion. We meet again on January sixth, so we'll take a look at that.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a, a comment about early retirement. That's kind of a sidebar issue of, you know, the research shows that your most experienced teachers are a key to closing the achievement gap, and it was brought up in a meeting, is that about early retirement? Well, I'm certainly not against the early retirement program. I think we also need to start thinking about ways we can bring some of these valuable resources back into the classroom. You know, I think we need to just start actively looking at that and say, okay, you want to retire, but we need your help in this area. How can we, because a lot of these teachers are, you know, they've, they've been there, they've done there, they understand it. And, and just let them go at such a young age, in a lot of cases, it seems a real waste to totally let them go. That's just a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got them all.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. It does say on, thank you for your work. Again, I know that committee works very hard on revising these, and it's great that we're up to date on all of them. I think that's just a lot of work, and, and we all appreciate that. Next, it says we meet in an exempt meeting. We were lucky enough to have a short meeting earlier in the evening, so we did already meet in an exempt session. I know I'll see all of you on Friday morning, but I want to publicly say, hope you have a safe and happy holiday with you and your family. We appreciate all the work that you do. You guys work so hard, and I want you to know, we know that, and we recognize that, and we have a top-notch, outstanding school district, and it's because of all of you, especially Dave Benson. So, it's a pleasure to serve on the board and work with all of the talent that's here in the room. So, thank you. I'll see you Friday morning. We stand adjourned.